Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
You call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. McConnell?
Here.
Mr. Tompkins?
Here.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Graytop?
Here.
Chairman Bone?
Here.
Any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda as presented. Report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five, minutes of previous meetings, items A through B.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval and file of the minutes of the March 21st, 2019 Commission meetings, a meeting, and the April 9th, 2019 Standing Committee meetings.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six, no proclamations. Item seven, consent agenda, items A through E.
I would move that we approve item seven, A through seven E, on the consent agenda items.
Support.
Any discussion on any of these items?
Yeah, just a question, Carrie, for you or maybe for Danielle. When we look at the monthly summary budget to actual, I know there's a lot of items that are, well, for example, our Board of Commissioners are exact, right? I mean, because we go month by month by month and it never changes. So, that's at the 22.5% when we get through the end of this period. And some of the other ones might be at 50%, some might be at 70%. And I know in the past, I've asked, and it's like, well, all the funding gets paid out in the first quarter, 80% of it does, and I understand that. Is there any way that there could be something asterisk, or if something was out of the ordinary, so that when we looked at it, I mean, I hate to be calling, I know Danielle has hardly anything to do, so she doesn't mind a phone call, but I hate to call and ask about an item that, that just, that's simple like that. But I would like to know if there was something that was 50%, 40% over budget at this time, where it's an unusual item. I don't know if that's something that could be brought to our attention, or if it's just something we have to dissect.
Usually those items, a lot of times, have to do with grants and timing of grants. In this time of year, a lot of entries are either getting booked to this year, or booked back to last year as part of our audit. So, the first three months of the year are kind of a moving target to get everything in the right fiscal year. The account numbers, if you look at the account numbers that start with a nine, those are project numbers and grants. So, those aren't going to be ones typically where you would have consistent expenses each month. They're typically more project-driven, so if it's a grant, and let's say it's for one piece of equipment, you could have 100% of your budget spent in February, but then you're done for the year because it was a grant for a specific item. You know, Danielle and I, we can talk internally if we can find a way to maybe somehow designate those on the report, so it's easier for Commissioners to know which is which.
Or even if there was like a red flag in your, if you thought there was something that was going a little bit south, or if it was something that was unusual, just to draw our attention to it.
Okay.
It may be beneficial. I don't know.
Yep, yep. We can look at that.
You look at those numbers, and it's, yeah, it's interesting. So, and I know that it always, it works out towards the end of the year, usually, but I don't want to make it.
Surprise.
Find out that something's, yeah, a big surprise.
You know, sometimes it is a previously approved board item, but since we only bring budget adjustments to you quarterly, or three times a year, it might be something that you did approve, but the budget hasn't caught up yet.
Correct.
So, we'll, we'll figure out a way that we can maybe designate those better, so the board knows if there's something unusual.
Or even, even just at the end of the, you know, proposal, that if there could be item 22, is this because, or I don't know.
Okay.
I don't want to make it a lot harder, but it's interesting reading. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All in favor on the consent agenda?
Aye.
Those opposed. Moving on, item eight, reports of standing and special committees. Mr. Graytop?
We had a Broadbent meeting a couple of days ago. There's some federal money and some state money that's coming available, and we've been working down in the Kochville area, trying to, we've located a great big egg-shaped piece down there that has no internet capabilities at all, and that's the area that we're going to target. There's a 25% match, but Rees is on board, and I believe that Rees probably will be able to do that match, whether they amortize it over one year or five years, they should be able to do the match for us. In that case, we would then be able to bring a company in and run that fiber probably straight down the middle of Kochville, and then tee off. And if we teed off, we would also connect like Palm School over there on Palm Road with something back this way, and that would give a little bit more redundancy to the system if there was a fault somewhere in the line that would give them some redundancy. So, you'd have a full loop, you could go either way on that loop. So, I just wanted to keep you up to speed, that we've been working on it for a long time, we're still working on it, and, but it is starting to look a little bit more hopeful. So, that's it.
David?
I have nothing.
Who?
No, sir.
Greg?
I attended the park meeting, I don't know, a week ago, maybe. Everything's going well. I did bring it to Mark's attention, that we had concern about our capital projects haven't been, have not been addressed. Today, I received a copy, and he sent it on to Jim, is it Jim Bear, buyer?
Jim Beer.
So, he sent it along to Jim also, and it was a copy from another county of the, of their layout, how it looks, you know, with the buildings listed in, the parking lots, and different structures that need maintenance. And I just told him that I thought it was pretty imperative that we receive something, and it should be a moving document, you know, something that's looked at on a yearly basis and readjusted. So, I was promised that, that we're going to be seeing something. They, today, I received it, and I think I got it because it was before the meeting, that's why he wanted us to have it. So, take a look at it, see what you think. I told him I didn't care what it looked like, I just wanted, we just needed to have something to get started. Got to have a template, so we have an idea where we're going.
It looks good.
Yeah, it, right, it shows, I explained to him, in my condo that we have, it's the same type of thing, right? We have a, an exterior painting fund, we have a roof fund, we have a pool fund, we have a yard maintenance fund, and we have a dock fund. So, every one of them was, you know, they told us our dock was good for 13 more years. So, we know a new dock's going to cost us $200,000, so you amortize it over 13 years, and that's how much money you need to be putting away, so you can pay for a dock, and it's, inflation is figured in. So, this way, we don't come up with a huge surprise someday, and then find out we need to spend three and a half million dollars when we have other projects that we're trying to do, and we're trying to maintain the buildings that are there. So, if we can have this in place, I think it'll be huge in setting up budgeting, so we can, I think it's imperative that we put money aside for these projects, so that it doesn't get spent, and we run low, and short people on the buildings.
If I could add to that, that'd be a tool that we almost have to have as Commissioners, because the parking wreck, along with the library, the county really supports it. But if we don't do our diligence, and if it gets turned down, there won't be money there, and if we don't have a tool in place to look at the maintenance costs just that by itself, electric bill, those kind of things, if we don't have that, we need to have that information.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, last month, Bill and I went to Socorro, New Mexico, with emergency management, a project that was funded through FEMA, and we went out to a terrorist bomb class. I, it was, it was very-
How to be a terrorist?
Well, I think Bill and I were the terrorists, but very interesting. I learned a lot. I learned why my dad was so upset when we used to get dynamite on the farm and blow stumps up, and we thought they were firecrackers, and it was a little more dangerous. I guess all of us can weigh with all our fingers and thumbs, so we're lucky. But, very interesting. It was comprised mostly of firemen, policemen, a gal that I sat next to was on Central Dispatch for 17 years in a, in one of the larger towns in Tennessee, and she switched over to the Sheriff's Department. And when you hear them talk, and I think it's like any class, when I was in insurance or whatever you're in, a lot of times, you, you find out more after the class is over, when you're talking to people, and everything came down to the same thing, it was all about communication. And when something happens, you have somebody in charge. So, if it's the first person there, and it's the fire department, there's always, whether it's egos or whatever, but you have fire, and you have police, and you have SWAT, and you have bomb, and everybody gets together when there's, when there's, everybody needs to get, get along, and it's all about communication. But we learned a lot. It was about awareness, about financial, and I think that's the best thing that, that I got out of it, is the preparedness that has to be done ahead of time, and you can't wait till something happens and say, we're going to do something about it. So, it tied in well, and I'm glad we went. There's other classes that follow up with it. I don't think it would be something that I would be interested in, because I don't want to learn more of the intricacies about the bombs and the different things and how they make them. What we learned was interesting, but I was there more for the financial end of things, the structure. It was very worthwhile, I'm glad we went.
It was, yeah, it was, it was very good. We were the only, really, non-first responders there for the most part, and most of the people made comments to myself, and I'm sure Greg heard some of the same comments. They were glad to see somebody else there, other than first responders, because we're the ones with the purse strings, we're the ones with the personnel, we're the ones that set things up, and so, for us to have that knowledge of how it works and how it operates at a certain point. Last thing in the world you want is a politician out there at a, at a first responders incident, but you want him behind the scenes somewhere where he can give you the finances, he can give you the personnel, the people that you need, things along those lines. So, it was good from that perspective. Really opened up your eyes to a lot of different things, and as Greg said, they have a lot more classes that are available, but I don't believe that, you know, we would need to go there. I think first responders need to go there. And I'll reiterate what Greg said about the communications piece. I think that I walked away with the understanding that our Central Dispatch is going to be very, very key in this. They always are, but for some reason, they don't get the, the respect, or whatever they don't get from the people in the field, because they're the ones who are really going to do all of the communicating. You could say whatever you want out there, but you can't reach the other guy. Only, only Central Dispatch is going to be able to do that, for the most part. And so, we need to make sure that Tina's trained, Tina's on board, Tina works well with, you know, our Homeland Security people, our first responders, and they have been doing that to a certain extent. But I just think that, I think my eyes were opened up to the fact that communications from Central Dispatch is a lot more important than I ever thought it would be.
Yeah, and I think right now, after our emergency management meeting last week, that there's a lot more collaboration going on with emergency management and Central Dispatch right now than there has been in, in previous times. So, Justin told me that it's pretty well on a daily basis that they at least email back and forth and talk about different things that are going on.
Yeah.
And I think in the near future, we're going to be hearing about maybe in a deputy or assistant, what, is it called in a, what would the title be?
Deputy Director.
Deputy Director at Emergency Management, so that in the event we have something happen, we actually have one of our county employees be there. Instead, we rely on a lot of volunteers in that area, and we still want those volunteers to be there, but every one of our volunteers are people that are going to be very active in any situation that happens.
Justin, Justin would be extremely valuable in the field, at the scene, because of all of his knowledge, and knows all this stuff from his years of training, whereas his deputy could be back there in the house and running the house back there.
Well, and if you have an event that lasts more than 24 hours, right, it's, it's pretty taxing on people. So, if we had, he's working on some funding issues, and I, it's going to be coming up, so just so everybody's aware. If we can find the funding, we're looking at a way to, to make this happen. That's it.
Howard?
I just have to respond to recall back in early 2000, when, after 9/11. And prior to that, all of our, or many of our fire departments and police departments had their own dispatch systems, their own radio frequencies, and everything. They came here, Jeff recalls this, in a state of panic. They all wanted 800 megahertz, so they could talk to each other. And, and the one that I recall in particular, that was most alarming, was the volunteer fire department of St. Clair Township, if I recall correctly, had to send runners when there was a fire event in St. Clair, and they were working with the St. Clair Fire Department. They had to send runners. They couldn't communicate any other way. In 2000, sending runners, that just absolutely blew my mind.
They only had two frequencies, so it would be like a radio that everybody would be sharing that same frequency.
Yeah.
Imagine having 50 people at the scene, trying to share one, then of course, you'd go to talk, and you drowned everybody else out, and it was not good.
And we, we had to step up to the plate and build the towers, and we were fortunate in that we got a number of grants for 800 megahertz radios and the like, and we were able to put it together for the community. But, to your point, it's all about communications when there's an emergency.
Carl?
Just prior to our meeting tonight, we had a meeting in the Change Order Committee, which consists of Chairman Bone, Commissioner Hyattman, and myself, and we received an update on the Marine City Courthouse project, and it's going along on budget. There are a couple minor change orders that we approved, but the project's nearing completion.
Justin?
Howard?
Nothing.
I'm going to take a pass. We're going to move on to citizens wishing to address the board. I've got Carrie Angie, 3031 Alden Court, Port Huron, Attorney, Guardian Contract.
Being a trial attorney, I typically don't-
I'm sorry, can you, it's hard to hear out here with that thing blowing, if you could talk.
Is this better?
Yes, much better.
Being a trial attorney, I typically don't script my comments, but I'm told I've been limited to three minutes this evening, so please, my apologies for writing a script, but three minutes is a very short period of time. First of all, I'd like to dispel any notion that I'm here to try to get this job. I wouldn't work in these conditions, or for these kind of people. I bid this contract at $78,000. That is $22,000 less than the posted contract price, not because that's what my experience level dictates, but because I'm blessed with my own practice and other business interests, which make me able to offer my talents to abused children. I wanted this job for the privilege of meeting personally with these children. The machinations that have gone on here are offensive, for several reasons. One of which being the work I've spent seven years doing over my 20-year legal career, which includes a two-year stint assigned as the Carehouse Prosecutor, where I listened every day to children speak of heinous, physical, sexual, and emotional abuse, and met with multidisciplinary teams comprised of therapists, police officers, DHS workers, and other child abuse experts, and then went to court to fight for their safety. Not in front of just one judge and one referee, but four judges and five referees. I now serve the children of Santa Lat County in my contract representing DHS, which is in its fourth year. I don't usually brag about my professional experience, but I think it's important to illustrate exactly what we are talking about. The contract bidding process outlined in the materials I provided was a farce. I was never asked about any of my experience during my 10-minute interview, nor was I asked once about my dramatic underbid of the contract price. And despite Mr. McMillan's invitation to contact him with questions, I made two phone calls and sent an email over the course of the week leading up to the bid deadline, and never received the courtesy of any response back. Just because the county paid an attorney to come in here and report this is all legal doesn't mean that it's moral or ethical, or that it should be done. You need to understand the award of this $291,000 contract to Mrs. Dan Kelly is money that is going directly into Mr. Dan Kelly's household and bank account. That is immoral, and that is unethical. This won't be lost on the taxpayers and citizens of this county, either. Not to mention, the current contract unethically awarded to Mrs. Dan Kelly conflicts her out of 25% of the existing cases, meaning that she is strictly prohibited by law from handling 25% of the existing cases.
Excuse me, you'll have to make your closing remarks, your three minutes is up.
This giant sum of money being awarded to Mrs. Dan Kelly is going directly to Mr. Dan Kelly's pocket. You should know that I will do my best to publicize these events. Indeed, the people I have already spoken to are disgusted and appalled. The citizens have a right to know what's going on here and how this money's being squandered. We have a Latin phrase in the law of which I am particularly fond, and I think it applies here. It's called "Race ipsa locutor," and that is, "The thing speaks for itself." Thank you.
Okay. No other citizens wishing to address the board? We're going to move on. Unfinished business. Going to, no motions to move that. Item number 11A, the approval of county disbursements, March of 2019.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the county disbursements for March of 2019 in the amount of $29,707,770.19.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item B, the foreclosure mowing agreement, John Soiko, JSC.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for the approval of professional service agreement for mowing, foreclosure, and land bank properties with John Soiko, JSC, for a term of 5/1 of 19 through 10/31 of 19, in the amount not to exceed $20,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item C, the Asset Recovery and Management Services Contract Renewal with the Intervention Center.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agreement with correctional recovery for jail inmate medical cost recovery services for two years, with an effective date of April 19, 2019.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item D, the 2018 Stone Garden Grant Agreement.
Chairman, I move to approve the fiscal year 2018 Operation Stone Garden Grant Agreement in the amount of $250,000 to be used for patrolling the US border areas for a period of September 1, 2018, to July 31, 2021. Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
The Legal Services Agreement for the 31st Family Court Contract Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Legal Services Agreement with David Kelly for the 31st Circuit Court in an amount not to exceed $81,827.88 for the term of March 18, 2019, through December 31, 2021.
Support.
Roll call.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item F, the Legal Services Agreement for the Guardian.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval, the Legal Services Contract with Lawyer-Guardian Ed Litton Services for the 31st Circuit Court with Mary R. Kelly for a period from March 18, 2019, through December 31, 2021, in a amount not to exceed $291,770.
Support.
Support. Who is that?
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
No.
Commissioner Hyattman?
No.
Commissioner Rushing?
No.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
No.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Okay. Item G, the Central Dispatch Add-on Council Proposal.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of an additional dispatch radio console for Motorola Solutions in the amount of $80,532.
Support.
Roll call.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item 12, Administrator's Report.
Quick update on Animal Control. We are now at full staffing. The director position has been filled, along with the Animal Control Officer. Our ACO started last week. The backlog of dog licenses has been completely caught up for counter, online, and mail-in, so all of our temporary staff are winding down, and our current staff will be able to keep up with the existing licenses. The majority of that work was done in the Treasurer's Office, as well as with some temporary staff out at Animal Control. Right now, the Treasurer is kind of currently reviewing the process, and our system, our current online system is clunky, so she's kind of looking for some alternatives, and the fees charged to the constituents that use it is kind of excessive. You know, it's $4 for a $12 dog license, and that fee is not negotiable. We have tried with the vendor, and we don't get that fee. That fee goes right to the vendor for the credit card processing fee, so we are looking at some alternatives that are easier for the residents to use and less costly. I've been having ongoing meetings with the Health Department on a staffing plan, as well as they are looking at building needs. I think many of you that have been around here, I know we've been talking about the need for a new health department for the full 20 years I have been here, but they're kind of taking a little bit different approach. They're going to have a building needs and a space analysis looked at, because in discussions, they're wondering if they need a large central area, or if our residents would be better served with maybe some smaller satellite offices. So, that is going to be under review, and they will come, be coming forward with a staffing proposal. They have received over a million dollars in new grants over the last few years, which has significantly increased the workloads of existing staff, and while many times there are positions attached to it, whether it be nursing, there's always a lot of the backend administrative work that needs to be done as well, and their clerical staff has been overwhelmed, so they will be coming forward with a proposal, along with a funding plan for those positions here in the next month or two. Our banking transition to Eastern is, should be complete by the end of this month. All of our checking accounts and savings accounts have been switched over. We will still have our accounts open for a period of time for all of those old checks to clear, but all new checks that are being cut will all be coming from our Eastern Michigan account going forward. I met with our surveyor, Mr.